That brings us now to the work session agenda. I have, it appears, about thirteen or fourteen people who have signed up to speak on issues on the agenda. If you have not already signed up, I'd appreciate your doing so at the table in the back of the room. And we'll proceed down the list here in the order in which I have received them. The first person I have on the list is Thomas Roberts. Mr. Roberts, if you come to the podium, you'll have three moments, three minutes. And the next speaker is Patricia Harris. Ms. Harris, if you're present, if you would come over and be ready to go, you don't care to speak?
I'm speaking.
Okay. Scott Wilson, do you wish to speak? Okay, if you would just come over and be ready to go as soon as Mr. Roberts concludes, I would appreciate it. Mr. Roberts.
My name is Thomas Roberts and I live at 916 Firethorn Place. I stand before you carrying the wishes of vast majority of the homeowners of the Gardens of Heartland who have expressed me directly and to many of you their opposition to the full completion of Sarin Drive. You've heard from me on this before, so let me try to review the issue from my perspective. We began about thirty years ago with the city developing a master plan that includes the concept of connector roads. My view is that the connector roads were established to allow homeowners to get to and from their homes to main roads as a result of the way the subdivisions were allowed to be developed. In many cases, the connector road was and is the only way to get to a main road. Unfortunately, the connector road system has also become a means of avoiding main roads and its numerous lights, a shortcut if you will, which has added more traffic to the connector road than originally planned. In some cases, the developers of newer developments have found a way to provide access and not bring about the need for the connector road. This is certainly the case on the west side of Tate's Creek, south of Manawar. Access to Tate's Creek can be made easily from Cumberland Hills, Woodfield, Gardens of Heartland, Charleston Gardens and Woods. But we still push to complete the master plan without any review or thought of change based upon how things have developed over the years. Jump forward to 1998. The city comes to the Scobes and indicates that a portion of their property is necessary to allow the completion of Sarin Drive. In 2001, the city produces a letter indicating eminent domain if the Scobes do not accept the offer. Takes two more years before this is completed. Unfortunately, in the process, the city has frustrated the Scobes and potentially the city has been frustrated by the Scobes. But the result is the Scobes have no legal access to their property. Now we come to 2007, another three years after the purchase of the Scobie property. The city's ready to complete the drive. The local area residents, which have been there for many years, say, wait, we don't want Sarin Drive completed. It'll add traffic to a residential street, making it unsafe. We don't need the road to be completed because we have access to Tate's Creek. We need to come to some compromise to incorporate the desires and needs of the area residents. The area homeowners understand this and are willing to work with that. Today, we are being asked to consider a new resolution that provides the Scobes with everything that they've indicated they feel they were owed except the full completion of Sarin Drive. The new resolution includes a walk-bike path, which some of the council has indicated should be included, particularly in order to get them to vote in favor of the resolution.
Mr. Roberts, you have about ten seconds left.
All right. You'll be asked to vote in simple majority, four against the new resolution. But remember, the overwhelming majority of the local residents are opposed to completion. The local area residents will remember who voted and which man are reflecting their dissatisfaction in a future vote. The area is a significant voting block. I offer this not as a threat, but only as a reminder that government is elected to carry out the will of the majority, in this case Sarin Drive. The majority has indicated not to complete the road, but provide the Scobes with the access they need.
Mr. Roberts, please conclude.
They are indicating you should support the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, if you'll step to the podium. And Mr. Sweeney, do you care to speak? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Scott Wilson, live at 4625 Sarin Drive. I represent the Cumberland Hill neighborhood. I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association. Appreciate your time. I know we've gone through a lot of this in previous work sessions. This new piece, right now, the resolution, or I'm sorry, the proposed resolution to this by Councilmember Lane, we've had discussions amongst the various neighborhoods who have all opposed the opening of Sarin Drive. We are all on board with this new proposal. We like the idea of a win-win compromise. We like the idea of bike path, walk path. We still don't like the idea of a full opening of Sarin Drive. Again, the plan was to use Sarin Drive as a collector's street. That was the essential wisdom in putting that in the comprehensive plan years ago. We proved through traffic data in 2007 here, we still don't need to use Sarin Drive as a collector's street. We don't have a problem with traffic on Tate's Creek Road. Safety is a key theme that's been running through this. Safety is probably the number one priority on this, and opening Sarin Drive will create an, it'll adversely affect the environment from a safety standpoint. You do not want to open this fully and create more traffic whereby more accidents, more people could get hit. And please keep that in mind in your collective conscience when you vote on this, that by opening this, you will really open up that can of worms of safety. Again, we just ask you to support this new resolution. We feel it's fair to the family, the Scobie family involved. Again, our neighborhoods are all for it. Please support it. If in ten, fifteen years you need to open it fully, bring it up then. But for now, do a partial opening. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Sweeney, and then Mr. Ochsweil, you're next.
My name is Mike Sweeney. I live at 4552 Longbridge Lane in Cumberland Hill. And I'm not going to take up much of your time. I just want to reiterate what two past speakers have said. I was president of Cumberland Hill Neighbor Association for five years preceding Mr. Wilson. And I've been before this council on a couple of other issues in the past with development, I guess most recently was the Clearwater, or the Clearview development at the corner of Clearwater and Sarin Drive. And we seem to be losing all the battles we fight. I think Mr. Lane has proposed an excellent option, an alternative, to opening up Sarin Drive on this with that, the plans he's developed. And as president of the association for five years, I can assure you, the number of people have come to me about speeding on Sarin Drive. I guess in light of my profession, they come to me and they think I can do something about this immediately. But the speeding and reckless driving on Sarin Drive, that was after they opened up Sarin to go all the way through to Manawar. I think if you open up this street from the other end, you're going to see more speeding, more running of stop signs. It took us years to get a stop sign at the corner of Jaris Drive and Sarin, and even longer to get the speed limit reduced. And we just feel like it's a neighborhood that doesn't need to be a through street, needs to be a quiet neighborhood with slow-moving vehicles, because there are a lot of children out in there. And if you create this through street, I think you're going to add a lot more headaches and a lot more issues to the neighbors of Cumberland Hill, Woodfield, and Heartland Gardens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Ochsweil. And then the next speaker is Susan Scott. Ms. Scott, if you'd come over. Thank you. Mr. Ochsweil?
I'm Don Ochsweil, president of Woodfield Homes. I live at 4600 Brindley Way. I believe Mr. Roberts, Mr. Wilson have spoken our minds. I have yet to receive the first resident in support of opening Sarin Drive. And given the fact that Woodfield Gardens or Woodfield Meadows behind us does not have a homeowners' association, I've received numerous letters and emails from residents who don't have representation via homeowners' association. They too are in support of Mr. Lane's resolution. And I would ask that you give careful consideration to this before making a decision. And thanks for your deliberate efforts thus far.
Thank you, Mr. Ochsweil. Ms. Scott, if you would step up. The next speaker is Ms. Burnside.
My name is Susan Scott, and I live at 2228 Woodburn Hall in Heartland, the large Heartland. I'm also the property manager of Heartland Homeowners Association. There are nine hundred and ninety homes in Heartland. The residents of Heartland are well aware of the unwanted result of the connector system. We live day-to-day with the extra traffic that passes through Heartland as people use the connector system as a means of avoiding traffic lights and reducing their drive time, generally driving at speeds greater than posted twenty-five miles per hour. We do not want to see Sarin Drive completed to Tate's Creek, as that will only increase the amount of traffic that passes along Heartland Parkway and possibly putting a light at Heartland Parkway and Tate's Creek Road. While we cannot undo what's happened in Heartland, we can indicate our support for not allowing the same thing to happen in Woodfield and Cumberland Hills and other subdivisions that Sarin Drive runs through. So we fully support the resolution that Ed Lane has proposed. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Burnside, if you'll step up. Our next speaker after Ms. Burnside will be Michael Scobie. Mr. Scobie, if you would come around. Ms. Burnside?
Good afternoon. Denise Burnside, 597 South Point Drive, Lexington. And as a homeowner of the more than nine hundred homes and residents of the Pinnacle subdivision and representative of the Pinnacle Homeowners Association, we are in agreement of this current proposal for the Sarin Drive project. My current commutes to and from home via South Point to Clearwater to Tate's Creek. As I'm traveling, I'm traveling the speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour, which has been reduced. But there are so many cars behind me, I look like I'm leading a parade. I've had horns blown at me. I've had people glare, stare as I pull into my driveway because I am doing the speed limit and you think that I'm the one that's out of order. Nonetheless, I wonder why I am the only one that's traveling at that twenty-five mile-per-hour posted sign. Now, if we were to open up by opening up Sarin, I just, I'm very concerned also what the traffic will be when this is connected. Again, the majority of the Pinnacle homeowner neighborhood is in support with the Heartland residents with Mr. Lane's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnside. Mr. Scobie, if you'd step up and have Ron Scobie up next, please.
My name is Michael Scobie. I live at 4907 Tate's Creek Road, and thank you for hearing me today. I realize that many of our neighbors opposing the connection of Sarin Drive will hold our family personally responsible if the road is completed as planned. This is very distressing because we have no desire to cause any confrontation with our neighbors. I hope that everyone understands that we did not create the current situation that forces our family to try and uphold their legal property rights. The city obliged our family to sell our property under the threat of eminent domain for the purpose of completing Sarin Drive. We were aware that it was part of the master plan when we purchased our property in 1984 and realized it would be completed someday. The city came to us in 1999 and said the completion was necessary because of the expanding surrounding neighborhoods. And in 2001, eminent domain was threatened to force the sale of our property to the city for the road connection. At that time, no one approached us to voice their opposition to the connection. The city came to us and said it was necessary to build the road because of the very developments that many of you reside. This development has occurred around us since we sold our property in 2003, excuse me. The development that has occurred around us since we sold our property in 2003 has been constructed according to the master plan. This plan called for our old entrance onto Tate's Creek Road to be closed permanently by order of the state roads department because it would no longer be safe. We cannot go back in time and undo all the development that has occurred without our old entrance in mind. Our family was forced to comply with the master plan, and we had to give up a large two-way frontage onto a major road in exchange for a much reduced two-way frontage onto Sarin Drive. We are now being asked to accept even further concessions to our former property rights in the interests of stopping the very connection we were forced to sell our land for. This makes no sense to our family, nor does it make any sense to any of the professional experts responsible for the city's long-term plans. Unfortunately, this put us in the predicament where we can accept nothing less than the completion of Sarin Drive as promised and understood when we sold our property. I believe that everyone would be just as upset as our family is over this issue if the promises and purposes surrounding the forced sale of their property were to suddenly change. We simply ask anyone who chooses to criticize us to ask themselves what they would do in our situation and to understand that we did not create the situation we find ourselves in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scobie. Ron Scobie is next. Denise Scobie, if you'd step around, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. We actually thought this matter had been finalized after the June 21 meeting, when there was a vote by the majority of the council to complete the construction. So it's kind of surprising that it is now being reopened. It's, you know, when do these matters finally become closed and when are decisions finally made? We were surprised to learn that it was being reopened. However, it seems that perhaps Councilor Lane, maybe some others, were, after the last meeting, planning to reopen the matter. And we did not learn about it until very, very recently. And it seems unfortunate that we've been caught in the middle of something that we didn't ask to be caught in the middle of. And it is time for the tough decisions to be made, even though they may not appear to be unpopular, or appear to be popular, I should say. I would really ask the council to consider whether or not, from our viewpoint, to not complete the Sarin Drive connection may not be regarded as an abuse of the eminent domain process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Scobie. Denise Scobie. And then I have Jian Scobie listed next. If you would come around and be ready to speak, I would appreciate it. We need your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, council members and fellow Lexingtonians. My name is Denise Scobie. I also live at 4907 Tate's Creek Road. I just wanted to illustrate and to everyone here or explain the stress that it's caused my family, this whole matter. It's been going on since early in the spring, and we've been a burden by having to attend a meeting here every two weeks. And for some of you, I'm sure this is the first time you've been here and maybe have not heard all of this, but for us, it's very repetitious. So that's really what I wanted to say, that, you know, that it's kind of, makes us lose a lot of faith in the government to see this system be so inefficient, for it to be continuing on like this. Just a comment on something one of the people said about that it being safer not to complete the road. And you're talking about increased traffic. Well, if you leave the road not completed and it's a dead end, what about the increased traffic at the dead end of that road and the homeowners that live there, where, you know, there's not even a proper turnabout there for cars to turn around? They're just going to be driving along Sarin Drive and all of a sudden it dead ends? I mean, you know, there's two driveways right there at the end of the road, and what are we, how are we supposed to pull out of our driveway when there's cars like trying to reverse and then, I don't know how you would turn around? But anyways, I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scobie. Ms. Scobie, if you would step up now. And the next person I have listed is Dave Cooper. Mr. Cooper, do you wish to speak?
My name is Jillian Scobie, and I reside at 4907 Tate's Creek Road. And good afternoon, everybody present. And I would just like, I have just a few statements to make. I just want, I request a permanent solution by the city council this year regarding a two-way traffic connection of Sarin Drive. This is a contract I have with the Lexington County Government under threat of eminent domain in 2001. This contract is binding by my title deed, and I cannot diminish my property rights by acceding to another temporary solution as requested by my neighbors. I'm sorry, I cannot find another solution, and I stand by my title deed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scobie. I have John Scobie wishes to speak. Are you Mr. Cooper? I called you at the wrong time. I apologize. All right. Mr., John Scobie is not here, is that correct? Thank you. Bruce Rector?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I live at 4713 Sarin Drive. My wife Tabitha and my son Trevor, my name is Bruce Rector. I have the triangular lot, which is at the corner where the Scobies would access Sarin Drive. And I want to share with the council today, we support Councilman Lane's proposal to allow the Scobies access out onto Sarin Drive, but to keep the street closed. And so one of the comments, one of the Scobie children just spoke to was, how are they going to get out? Well, for the last twelve years, my family's gotten out just fine to go left on Sarin Drive. And yesterday, Bob and Marwin came out and showed us how that build-out would come for them to come into Sarin Drive. And I don't see them having any different access with keeping it closed. And actually, it would be a safer access to them to keep it closed. What they're proposing is to change eighty to a hundred feet along the front of my property to bring it out in and narrow the street, because they seem to recognize that it would be a safety hazard for the Scobies and for our neighborhood if they left it as wide as it was originally built out as a collector's street. But the reality is, even narrowing the street as they are, won't totally stop the traffic through there. It's a danger for the Scobies to pull out there, based upon my observation of the last twelve years. It also will make our neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods less biker and pedestrian-friendly because of the reality of there are crazy folks like myself that run marathons, and two buddies of mine have just finished the Ironman triathlon, that go for long distances. But the average person exercises, walks, rides a bike next to their house in their neighborhood. And we have a very good neighborhood for doing that now, but there'll be many families like ours, who my seven-year-old son is able to ride his bike now, he won't be able to ride his bike now if the street goes through, just because of safety purposes as parents. There are elderly folks live within fifty feet where this dead ends. And it's a disincentive to folks to go out and walk their neighborhood or bike in their neighborhood if they know they're going to have to encounter traffic, any kind of traffic, and this would increase the traffic flow through our neighborhood. And at a time when we really need to be encouraging folks to get out of the neighborhood and have the kind of neighborhood we've been lucky enough to have in Woodfield for a long time now, where folks can easily access the neighborhood to get out and exercise and bike, it would be a shame to provide a disincentive to those folks now, the opening of the street. We support Councilman Lane's proposal, and we hope that the council will do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are the only individuals I have listed. Yes, ma'am. Curious. I do have you on the list. Come right ahead. Is there anyone else in addition to Ms. Scobie? All right, Ms. Scobie?
Sorry. I don't have much to say. I'm Kathleen Scobie, representing 4907 Tate's Creek Road as well. I just have a couple of things that I'm confused about. Since we knew and our neighbors also knew for a very long time now that Sarin Drive would be connected, I'm a little confused as to even why the objections are being raised, because to me, that is like purchasing a home next to a large field that is slated to become an airport, and then later complaining about airport construction when it was an inevitability before the property was even built. So I'm a little confused about that. Also, I don't think that there are some neighbors in those neighborhoods who do wish this road to go through. It's true, perhaps the majority does not, but there are still those who do. And I feel that they're not being represented because they purchased their homes with that expectation that the road would be built. Nevertheless, the neighbors here wish to adhere to the principles of majority rules. And if we're going to adhere to those principles, then I think that we should respect the majority opinion of this council, which was rendered two months ago in an eight to seven vote, and they decided to build the road. I think we should also respect the majority vote of the two prior city councils under Mayor Pam Miller and Mayor Teresa Isaacs, both of whom voted to build the road. And I think we should also accept the majority vote of the planning commission this year, which voted in a majority vote of seven to one to complete the road. All that said, the most important issue to me personally is that when it comes to matters of individual property rights or individual civil rights, the majority does not have the power to supersede the individual rights of a person. That is just a matter of constitutional law. The will of the majority simply cannot be imposed upon an individual when it comes to that. And I think that you all need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for anyone who wishes to comment on matters on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no rezonings or dockets to be approved, so that'll take us down to the summaries. We have two. Any motions? Move approval?
Second.
A motion to approve the two dockets listed on the agenda. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember James?
On page seven, I'm sorry. I don't know what real page it is. Let's see. It's the August 14th work section summary. It says page seven at the bottom, and it says a motion by Councilmember Gordon, and it said passed with dissent. I wonder if that means passed without dissent? So it's passed with dissent?
There were dissents on there, but at the time, we couldn't hear or we couldn't tell who it was. So we heard it, but we couldn't tell who it was. And so that's why I had to just make a note that it was actually with dissent.
Okay, thank you. I think that is kind of a reminder to us that we need to start using our electronic voting systems as much as we can. So if we can all remind each other to use the electronic voting system, I think it would be helpful in getting accurate minutes. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
There's a motion to approve the minutes, the summaries. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Blue, you wish to vote? Thank you very much. Motion carries. There are no budget amendments. Brings us down to items that need to be council members to attend.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of today's budget and finance meeting, there are several council members who have council capital funds that were allocated two years ago, where the work has recently been completed over our summer break and/or the last month or so. And with that in mind, I know Commissioner Coe has worked diligently with us the last couple of hours trying to figure out a solution to pay in some of our vendors for work that has been done through our nonprofits that we've given money to. And we've come up with a solution to be able to hopefully expedite that. And I know this council will endorse, and our administration will do everything we can to get these people paid in a timely manner, notwithstanding this budget amendment. So I hereby make a motion to reappropriate council capital balances by district in FY 2008 in a total amount of $282,266.14. So moved.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote yes electronically. Brings us down to new business. Are there any motions?
Second.
Have a motion to approve the items in new business. Any discussion? I think we need to clear the ballot. Can clerk clear the ballot, please? Now, those in favor approving the items in new business, please vote. Those in favor approving the items in new business, please vote electronically. Vice Mayor Gray.
Well, I've been told, suggested by Councilmember Maloney, that I should recuse myself on this $100 donation on item number K. So I'm recused from voting on that.
All right. Clerk will note that recusal on that item. Any further comments from the council?
I got a question on that.
Councilmember Maloney.
How did that show up? I mean, if you have to include yourself on one of those votes, how do you make sure that everybody knows that you voted on the rest and you can't vote on that one?
We actually have a quick note over here, that we put on here, that he disqualified on item K.
Okay.
And then we will denote it in the summary when it is published.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Does that, would it have an "I" and all the rest of the stuff, and just recusal for just on that one, correct?
Any further comments by the council? Then let's record the vote. Motion carries. Brings us down to the presentations. First one is for the Corridors Committee. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm privileged to be able to bring to the council and to those who may be tuned in to CTB 3 that report from the Corridors Committee. It's not an oversight committee. As you recall, we did pass last year, I think, a procedure for oversight committees to report on a regular basis to the council. But because this is a council committee, which was started in 1987 by council members Miller and Todd, has been meeting regularly since then, but it's usually not reported. I think we should start reporting to you about what we're doing. Our membership on this committee consists of members of the council, as well as State Transportation Department, many different agencies within the Lexington, Fayette Urban County Government, and many citizens attend, as well as various people in the community who are interested in our corridors. At our last meeting, we had 27 people. And we've been, have had good attendance all year, and lively discussions. Our meetings usually are held on the third Tuesday of the month, beginning at 11:30, and we are hard-pressed to finish by 1:00. All members of the council or any other citizens, of course, are invited to attend if they wish. The mission of this committee is to review the various corridors, main roads leading in and out of Lexington, and with concerns primarily concerning their aesthetic appearance, landscaping, and other efforts that we can make to improve them. Also, recently, we sponsored a litter summit here in these chambers one afternoon at 5:00, and the place was filled. There's a lot of interest in Lexington about what can be done about litter, and graffiti, and other things that deface our community. The committee has recently started a program to coordinate the various elements of our community, which are dealing with this, and try and bring some enhancement to the question of doing away with litter. Our budget comes from the general fund. Some years, we do okay. This year, we're in the budget for about $100,000. Some years, we've had nothing. We also get money from grants from citizens, and we work with property owners to share their costs of putting in trees and things like that. Right now, we have three grants which have been ordered to us, the Urban County Government, through the Corridors Committee, for the transportation enhancement. The first one, we received several years ago for a stone fence on Main Chance Farm at Albert University, which we partnered with, decided to construct that fence themselves, and we transferred that project to the intersection of Alexandria and Old Frankfurt Pike, where the transportation department is putting in a roundabout and redoing that intersection. We are placing a stone fence along the Old Frankfurt Pike at that site. The second is a grant we received last year to enhance the appearance of Versailles Road, more or less from the airport into the junction of High Street and Maxwell, in preparation for our World Equestrian Game, that being the main entrance to Lexington for many of our international and national visitors. This will include vegetation, signage, fences, and other embellishments that will help Versailles Road. We received this year a grant from the transportation enhancement to work on Newtown Pike from Main Street out to the interstate. We generally have "corridors plans," we call them, and work with a landscape architect to survey a road and decide what can be done. And this money will be used to implement the plans which we have in place for Versailles Road and Newtown Pike. We're not sure how much was in that last grant, but we're finding out now. And it was announced as $650,000. We only applied for $200 and some odd. And we think maybe the transportation enhancement, people have got a little confused there. But if it is truly $650,000, we'll spend it wisely. We do also propose ordinances from time to time. For example, there's a landscape ordinance in place for Manowar from Richmond Road to the interstate. And that requires, when a property is developed, that landscaping be placed along the road, which on that road includes a black four-plank horse farm fence with a berm, with vegetation on the berm, and with watering. So that's quite extensive. And if you drive along Manowar now, you'll see that the trees and so forth that have been planted there through the years are growing. That creates a problem, which we recognize, in that people who own commercial properties don't like to be hidden behind a forest, and they like their property to be seen from a road. So we try to keep that in mind when we do things. We had a survey done at our last Corridors meeting, which listed all the main corridors in the community, what the progress, state of progress on them is. And I believe that Mr. Schoniger, who is our Urban County employee who takes care of the Corridors Committee, may have handed out to you a survey form, and I'm inviting the council to review that. And if you have some ideas about corridors that may be in your district, to put your ideas down on this paper, and we will correlate all that information as we go forward. We look forward to working with the administration and the council and the citizens during the coming year. We invite your input, your criticisms, and any ideas you may have. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mayor, should there be any.
Does any council member have questions? For Councilmember Stevens. Looks like you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Planning Committee report. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Committee met August 21st and spent the entire two-hour meeting discussing the Louisville Water Pipeline Proposal. And there was one motion, which actually I don't believe needs to come to the main council. It was within the committee to continue the discussion at our September 18th meeting.
Any questions for Councilmember Gordon? Seeing none, I think that brings us down now to the Saran Drive presentation, and I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'd like to start out by just giving a quick bit of history on this, in that I was asked by one of the neighborhood associations back in December of last year to, you know, bring a motion to the council not to connect Saran Drive. And I told the neighborhood at that time, and they voted, I believe, 56 to 4, it was the Heartland Gardens Neighborhood Association, that before I would take any action on this, I would like to get feedback from all of the neighborhoods in the Saran Drive corridor. So we sent letters right after the first of the year with information on this to all the neighborhood associations. And they responded, and the unanimous response from the neighborhood associations, they did not wish to have Saran Drive connected. As you know today, they reiterated that position once more. Unfortunately, I was not aware at the time that the Scobies owned a farm that had a driveway that crossed over Saran Drive, because that information was just not known to me as a council member. When that information became available, I had a number of meetings with Mr. and Mrs. Scobie, I know Commissioner Kelly, the Law Department, and we worked on a number of options to provide them with adequate and satisfactory access to either Saran Drive or through Tates Creek going onto Ivy Bridge, onto the Saran Drive extension running over to Tates Creek, but at the same time, not opening the entire roadway up. We were unable to, you know, reach any kind of a solution in that regard. And a motion was made to either offer to sell them their property back, or alternatively to build in a driveway for them that would give them access onto Tates Creek. That motion did fail. So having basically approached it to try to take care of the Scobies, because I felt that they were left out in my initial efforts on this, and that they had not been consulted early on, you know, we made a strong effort to accommodate them, and were unable to work out something in that regard. So the proposal that I'm bringing up today is a different proposal, it's a new proposal, which I felt would be a compromise and would fulfill the Scobies' property rights and fulfill the government's obligation to them, at the same time, allow a compromise so that the road would not be connected. And I would like, at this time, if you could put up, I believe it's number B overhead, if you don't mind. While that's being put up, I would just mention a couple of other little bits of information that have not been brought up today. I did investigate, and along Saran Drive, there have been a number of requests to put in, I need the other overhead, I'm sorry, I may have misdirected you on that. There have been a number of issues relating traffic, and three new multi-stop signs have been installed at Saran and Rock Bridge, Saran and Jerius, and Saran and Clearwater. And as the council member, I've probably gotten more requests for traffic issues on Saran Drive than any other street in any of my districts, any of my district. In addition, there was a request to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour, and that was approved. And I think this shows you that, you know, our traffic engineering department has been concerned about safety issues and traffic speed, and by putting the stop signs in and reducing the traffic speed. Also, wanted to share this one more time. The data on the board show the traffic counts on Tates Creek Pike. And if you'll notice, that the highest count is at New Circle Road, where it's 52,000, and that was a 2004 report. When you go to Manowar Boulevard, the south, just south of that, it drops to 8900, which is much reduced. And DeLonge Road, which is further south than ours, is about 6,000. So you can figure the traffic count along Tates Creek is around 7,000 or 8,000 cars a day along the Saran Drive corridor. That is a five-lane road. It has a turn lane and two north, two southbound lanes. And I think that most people, and I live down in the area, use this road, and it's really running parallel to Saran, and it's eliminated the necessity to have Saran as a collector drive. All right, could you put up the other overhead? You've got the other one, other than Louie, of that one, please. Can you dim the lights a little bit on that too, please? I'm sorry, the quality on this is not quite as good as I would like, but let me use the, and I'm the laser here. And this is, that street right there is Saran Drive, and this is Ivy Bridge. It runs down into the Heartland Gardens subdivision. Currently, the Scobies' driveway runs just north of that, crosses down, runs down this way, and goes down, that's their house right in this area here. The plan would be, the new plan would be to take, this is Saran Drive, which runs on down to Manowar Boulevard, to take Saran Drive and extend it across the frontage of their property. We would construct the road to the specifications that the city set, but in, you know, the curb cut that they were, till they would get onto Saran Drive, put in the sidewalks to the storm drainage and the water drainage system and grade the property. But at the same time, would not connect, the final connection here between the end of Saran extended in front of their property and the Saran Drive here. To me, this is a compromise that would give the Scobies the road frontage, the access, the dedicated roadway, a much safer way to get in and out of their property, and give them the curb cut they were promised and the sidewalks. At the same time, by not connecting the road, you know, we are considering the wishes of all the neighborhoods along the Saran Drive corridor, and the safety issues along Saran Drive for kids, people that are riding their bikes out there. With regard to imposing on the Scobies, most of the traffic on Tates Creek does go to the north. So if the Scobies come out of their driveway here, if the road had been connected, they would go here and drive up to there. Or alternatively, now they would drive this way and drive up to there. This is Forest Lake Drive. So the difference is probably 300 or 400 feet of additional drive distance for them. And then, if the Scobies decided at some future date to develop their property, or if some other issues came up, the council would have the right to, you know, obviously connect the road at any time. Now, at this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Don Kelly to come up and answer a few questions about the improvements that will be made to the Scobies' roadway in front of their house. And perhaps you could put the other slide up at this time, please. Commissioner Kelly, could you, I think the number one question that most people would like to know, well, the road that is constructed along the frontage of the Scobies' property, will it be, you know, standard road construction and meet all the standards of roads for Fayette County?
Yes, it would. But carrying that a step further, we had also proposed doing some traffic calming in this section of roadway as well. So it will be slightly different from existing Saran Drive, it'd be narrowed somewhat, and then, of course, it'd have the bike and walking trail parallel to that as well. But we would go ahead and do the drainage and everything else that would normally be
Well, the cost of the construction on this would be approximately what it would have been if, you know, if you had done, you know, earlier or later, other than the cost changes due to inflation. I mean, were we spending any extra money to do this we normally wouldn't spend?
No. Well, yes and no. No, because what we're doing is, can be used in the future as well. But also, we're going to have to go ahead and do all the drainage that we would have done if we'd constructed the whole route. So, you know, there's an additional cost for that amount of drainage, but when the road is eventually built through, it will pick back up then. So it's, there's really, it offsets. There's no gain or loss, anyone on that.
All right. Will the sidewalk in front of their property be constructed?
Yes.
Okay. And then there will be a curb cut that goes into their property and ties into their driveway. Will that also be constructed to codes, and will it be at the Urban County Government's expense?
Yes. It would be the same as if the road were carried through.
Is there anything else that you would like to add to discussion on that, or if the Scobies? I guess the other question I would have is that if this were approved by council, will we be willing and able to sit down with the Scobies and go over this in detail, explain every nuance to them? They've been provided information on this, but the, you know, these are construction drawings, and they're sometimes not totally easy to follow. But work out any details with them if there was necessary?
Sure.
Okay. All right, that's all that I have. Anyway, this is the proposal, the new proposal for- Anyway, this is the proposal, the new proposal for accommodating the Scobies, give them the dedicated roadway, curb cut, their address would be on Saran Drive, and, you know, I feel like this is a compromise that meets our obligations to build a road in front of their property, and at the same time, allow there to be a delay in the connection of the road. With that in mind, I would like to move pursuant to Council Rule 4.407 to B to rescind the vote on Resolution Number 28 on the Council docket on June 23, 2007, related to the connection of Saran Drive. And would it be appropriate to make that motion now, Mayor, or you want to do it later?
I think it would. And we have a second, any discussion? Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the first thing that we need to be clear on this, as we rediscuss this entire issue, is that while the city wants to be fair to the Scobies and to keep in good faith to the purchase of the Scobie property and the purpose of that purchase, the issue here is not the Scobies. The issue is whether to rescind the decision made on June 21 by this council. Seems to me it would be right to rescind that decision if there were new information, new facts had come to light, voices that had not been heard, issues that had not been fully discussed. But in looking back, I find that none of this is the case. The council debated the issue fully and over a great length of time. The residents of the area were given ample opportunity to put forward their views, the Scobies had ample opportunity to put forward theirs. We heard from our city agencies on this issue. So, there was a full, a complete discussion. The issue came down to this, whether to keep Saran Drive open or to close it, in terms of what was the best public policy. The council decided that the best public policy was to open Saran Drive, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and consistent with a rational relationship between collective roads and arterials. I would say too, that this, although it was a close decision, eight to seven, it was a council decision. All of us up here have been on both sides of eight, seven votes. But what we all know, as we work together, is that once a decision is made, it's a council decision. This is not to say that we don't reconsider from time to time, but that when we do, it should be on the basis of new information, new facts, new issues. I see none here. So, I intend to vote no on this motion, and to vote against the motion to rescind. Thank you, Mayor.
Does any other council member wish to address the issue? Seeing none, let's vote electronically. We need to reset the voting, please, before you wait, before you vote.
Could you restate the motion?
Sure, I'll be glad to, as soon as we get the ballot cleared here. All right, the motion is to rescind the action taken when the council approved Resolution Number 28 on June 27, 2007. Effect of the motion would be to rescind the decision to complete the project as originally constructed. So, council members, please vote electronically. The chair recognizes a tie vote, and the chair votes no, so the motion fails. That brings us down to the Lemonade Presentation, Major Ashcroft.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Major Deborah Ashcraft, and it's my honor to serve the poor in Lexington, along with my husband, Major Stephen Ashcraft, and to be here this afternoon to tell you about a wonderful thing that hundreds of our children in Lexington did this summer, and that was to participate in the Lemonade Project. We've got some pictures, I didn't know I'd be so far away from my assistant over here, so please bear with me. The concept of Lemonade Days was that kids would be helping homeless kids by raising funds, by having a lemonade stand in our community sometime between July 4 and the 23rd. And parents registered their kids, and they received a kit, along with a sign, a badge to wear, kind of a how-to brochure, and then they were allowed to set up their stand at home, or wherever they could get permission, and many of our kids participated. Now, we had three goals for Lemonade Days. One was the obvious, to raise money, especially for our homeless shelter, where we house women and families. And the second was to raise awareness, and I have a growth chart for you today. We wanted the community to have an understanding of the increase in homeless, single women, and families that are seeking refuge at the Salvation Army. We also wanted the community to be aware that children are homeless, in fact, across the United States, the average age of a homeless person is now nine. And last year, we had 406 beautiful children who stayed at the Salvation Army Shelter. We also wanted the community to have an understanding of what it costs. It's a privilege to house homeless children, it's also very costly. We need to provide childcare while their parents are going to counseling classes or job training, or actually working and saving money for their own home. With children, you need to provide diapers and baby food and school supplies, and you also need a social worker, working with the child and the parent. Now, the third thing we wanted to do, we're raising money, raising awareness, and the third thing we wanted to do was to encourage caring behavior in the children in our community, and to empower kids that they can make a difference in their community. And we decided right from the start that there would be no prizes and no competition. We also got some help from some caring adults, and we have some of our, I have a logo, picture of our sponsors. There were four businesses that contributed right up front, $5,000 each, so we started with $20,000. And then we had some media partners in the Fayette Mall that helped us in promoting this event. Promotion began in mid-June at the Fayette Mall, we were allowed to have a lemonade stand here, made by Home Depot, and we started to sign kids up there, they could also register at the Fourth of July booth at the Salvation Army. Some churches held registration, and most of the people registered online. And we were very pleased that July 3, Mayor Jim Newberry kicked off Lemonade Days in front of Fifth Third Bank, along with many of our children from our Boys and Girls Club. And this really helped to, helped the community to understand what was going on, all of the television stations came, we were very blessed by that, and many of the radio stations. And then we had the Fourth of July parade, and we were privileged to participate in that, as well as having a booth during the festival to register kids for lemonade. I want to say a big thank you also to the parents who really were caring adults and helped out, and youth group leaders who provided the supplies for the lemonade stand, gave the children support, and really talked to them about the importance of this project. We had many kids give us pictures of their lemonade stand, and we have five photographs that you can just run through. Some kids chose to have their lemonade stand at home, some kids worked with a group, some also, you see a little creativity there, some kids got permission to have their lemonade stand in front of a business, and they all had a really good time. We had children from a young age through middle school and some high school, and I even had one person call and say, can adults have a lemonade stand? And I said, sure, go right ahead. So, we did have one stand run by adults. Now, the, I've talked to you about how the event kicked off and ran from July 4 to the 23rd, and I just wanted to mention about the finale. Again, we did not want this to be a competition, but we did want to celebrate this really great thing that the kids in our community had done. And so, at the Fayette Mall on July 23, from 4 to 7:00 in the evening, we invited the kids to come and put all their money in the giant kettle. We wanted the child who raised $8 to feel that they did a great job, just like the one who may have brought in a couple of hundred dollars. We had also, at the mall, we had a quilt that was made by one of the parents, and so the kids signed this quilt, and that's being displayed in our shelter, so that our residents know the community is really behind them and wanting to help them rebuild their lives. And we also had Sonic, who provided the free food, and then Channel 18 came out, and Mix 94 provided music, and we made some balloon sculptures, so it was a great time to end this wonderful fundraising drive, and I was very impressed by the children and the parents. Clearly, they knew what they had done, we can go to the next picture, and we were able to accomplish our goals, these are the results. We raised $37,883.21, so the kids themselves in our community raised almost $18,000. We raised awareness about the shelter and the importance of meeting the need of homeless individuals, and we also encouraged caring behavior and empowered kids in our community to make a positive change. My husband and I were absolutely thrilled, and never really expected that over 1,000 kids would participate for the first year, and they ran 221 stands, and I want to tell you that the vast majority of these kids, 70% of them, were from Lexington. So, if one measure of a community is its children, then Lexington shines very brightly. God bless you.
Thank you, Major Ashcraft. Are there any questions from any member of the council? Councilmember James?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to make a statement that I, when I saw the article in the paper of how much had been raised, I was just so impressed, and immediately emailed the director of the Boys and Girls Club and let her know that it's just, it's amazing to see the power of children and what they can do, and it's just very important that children get involved at a young age of helping people, because that's what, that's what's going to keep us going when all this fails, we're going to need each other. So, thank you so much for doing this, and I'm just really impressed by these children. Thank you.
Oh, my, thanks.
Anything further? Suffice it to say, I certainly share Councilmember James's comments, Major Ashcraft, and all of you at the Salvation Army are to be commended for the work you do on a daily basis. It is life-changing work for so many of the folks there, and we're grateful for it. Thank you. That brings us to the council report on the agenda. If you wish to make a report, if you'll indicate that you request to speak, we'll just take folks in the order in which they pop up. Councilmember Stenner.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. One, to remind my fellow council colleagues that tonight, we are meeting at 6:00 PM on the Dog Task Force, and we actually will be starting the review of the ordinances, so you're welcome to attend and catch up on your dog information tonight. Also, Mayor, we have a book, that Citizens Guide, or Citizens Answer Book, that we usually typically hand out. Is there any information about redoing that book? Because several people request the Citizens Answer Guide, and it obviously has the old council and old mayor in that book. Are we under the process of redoing that book, and do you know, any indication of how long it'll be?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm sure we can find an answer to that fairly quickly from the folks in public information, but I'll see if we can't go ahead and get that done.
That'd be great.
Let me, Mr. Kelly has agreed, Joe Kelly has agreed to make that happen?
[inaudible]
All right, that takes care of that agenda item, it's in the works.
Good, thank you, sir, that's all.
Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got an issue came up in my district where we're putting some new trees out, and a couple of them that we put out about four years ago, people are going around and putting signs up and nailing to these trees. And I know you all are trying to work on these yard sales ordinance, and I know it's in the Service Committee, but to me, that seems like, this is the issue, because the city put a lot of money into these trees that are happening, when they're putting these nails in these trees, I think, I really feel that maybe we ought to go a little bit beyond and get the address, and maybe we may start penalizing people for doing things like destroying property, I mean, especially trees that we planted, and I'm hoping that, I know we do have it in the committee, but I don't think anybody ever looked at that issue, and maybe, I'm not in that committee, so, Service Committee, I know, who's the one, Jay, I guess, were you all working on the sign ordinance? I mean, yard signs and those kind of things, because this is an issue where they're starting to put them in brand-new trees, and hammering the nails, and these trees are not very big, they're probably no bigger than...
Yeah, I think that's something we need to make sure comes out of Services Committee very quickly. We, most folks are really asking, where are we on the signs? They still show up in the meetings and that type of thing, so I would, I would say that just add this to the list, and let's look to try and move that through Services, if that's okay. Councilmember Ellinger.
I mean, I still think we ought to do something immediately now with those, if they're already in the trees, and maybe code enforcement or whoever is responsible for signs like that, and get the addresses down, because if they do end up, the trees end up being damaged, I think somebody should be liable for paying for those trees after we put taxpayers' money into those, to beautify those areas. And I know maybe, I don't know if it's something that code enforcement would want to do, or what.
I think the sign ordinance has some fairly specific penalties associated with it, to the degree you want to have a higher level of penalties associated with people who put signs on trees. I understand where you're coming from, I happen to personally think that'd be a good idea, but we'd need to amend the ordinance if you want to do something other than what the ordinance currently permits us to do.
Maybe I need to get, I mean, to do it right, I guess we'll probably have to get a law department to see what we can amend the language and do something, because I tell you, it kind of disturbed me to see those trees get the signs put up, and we're putting a lot of money down there. The other thing is, it's Labor Day this weekend, and I just want to give everybody a heads up, it's going to be kind of crowded Saturday, we got a good event coming in, and I think hopefully it'll carry on for the rest of the season. So, I'll ask everybody to be patient, and we got a lot of new students at the UK, and that don't quite know the rules on where parking and where, how many cars can park in the yard, so I think the first game will kind of set an example of what's going to happen the rest of the years, and so, just let everybody know that it's going to be kind of rough this week, but after we get a feel of it, I think the next few home games, we'll probably have everything on track. Because I know Dick the Camp would have been here to speak on it today, so I know he's not here, so I just want to, I know Dick would have liked to say that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to place into the Planning Committee the issue of the purchase or an acceptable lease of the Meadowbrook Golf Course from the Fayette County Public School System. I have requested this be put on the Planning Committee agenda for discussion at its next regularly scheduled meeting on September 18.
We have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a number of folks in my district, along with everyone else, who has really asked us to do all that we possibly can on this situation, and I just wanted to publicly say that over the weekend, I've had numerous conversations with the school board, with folks internally, with LFUCG, as far as, you know, can we, if the school board doesn't sell it by a certain time, can we open it and run it? Can we, what can we do on our end? And I think a lot of citizens are merely asking us to do all that we possibly can, so I fully support this motion, but I do want to let folks know that it has been indicated to me by the school board that they feel like they have a number of folks who are going to, who have a strong interest in buying this property, and they have no real interest in... have no real interest in doing anything but selling it at this point. And so, again, I want folks to know out there that this body, as evidenced by this motion and a number of things that have been going on, has really tried to do all that's possible. And I thank Commissioner Cole and Mayor Newberry for the efforts that they've extended in this regard. And at this point in time, it looks like the school board has made up their mind. They feel like, feel very strongly they can sell this. So while I certainly support this motion, and we need to continually do all that we can, citizens need to understand that it is their property. They own it, and the issues of how much money has been lost there and those types of things really is not necessarily germane to whether they can sell it or not. And so I just want to take this time publicly to say where we are in this, and I do appreciate your willingness to do everything you can, Councilmember Beard, because it's certainly what I've been trying to do as well, both publicly and privately.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also supportive of this, and I hope that we can maybe talk with the school board about some sort of rental even until the Larry Gilbert Three Par Course is open. I'm not a golfer, so I didn't realize until I started getting all the emails from the older folks and from the young folks how much they appreciate a three-par course and what it really means to them. And those are folks, it seems, who generally don't use the other golf courses. And so if we don't strike, if we're not able to strike some sort of a deal, even if it's temporary, until we get our planned Larry Gilbert course, all these folks will be left without a three-par for a number of years, I suspect. So I'm also supportive of some kind of negotiating here real quick, so that maybe we could strike a deal for lease of the course. Thank you.
Councilmember Maloney.
Dr. Stevens made a motion to put it in the Service Committee, and I believe the Service Committee meets, I mean, the Larry Gilbert Golf, and I think they meet before the Planning Commission, and I think we ought to have both of these at the same time. The Larry Gilbert discussion and the golf course, I think that, because I think if you do it two weeks, it gets kind of confusing, and we're all going to be talking about the same thing. So if we can work out a deal, if Larry Gilbert does work, it may take two years, maybe we can do a two-year lease with Meadowbrook or something, and I think we could do them all at the same time, and everybody'd be, because if we talk, we'd be able to educate the people. You're getting phone calls on what we want to do with the Larry Gilbert, and then if we wait two more weeks to whenever Planning meets, you have the same people back in here talking about Meadowbrook. So I think it'd be best if we do them at the same time. So I ask, maybe if you want to put it in the Service Committee, since it meets quicker, we can have that discussion.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes, the Service Committee would be scheduled to meet the first, I think, probably on the 11th. Is that right? Because we're off on the 4th, but that would be ahead. I would certainly support that. I think the sooner we get around to talking about it, the better.
I would amend if, I would amend my motion if it's acceptable to move it to the Services Committee. I just, I just want to get after this issue, is what I want to do.
And is it already in the Services Committee?
Yeah. Well, the Larry Gilbert is, not necessarily a discussion about Meadowbrook.
Okay.
Not correct.
Yeah, the Larry Gilbert is, but I think we can put both together, because they have the same people here to talk about Meadowbrook.
So the motion is to refer the potential acquisition of the Meadowbrook Golf Course to the Services Committee?
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, please vote electronically. Motion carries. All right. Next, anything further? Councilmember Beard? Councilmember Myers?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start my report by saying that the Social Services Needs Assessment Summit is tonight, and I just want to read some things from the website to make sure I get all the information out. It says, "Let's share our dreams of a Lexington that meets the needs of all its citizens. Attention, all dreamers, let's talk. The social services community is planning a community needs assessment, a time to dream about what's best for every citizen in our community, and your input is needed. The work will begin with the summit scheduled for 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at tonight, and it's going to be at the First Baptist Church, Bracktown, 3016 Bracktown Road. The summit will be an opportunity to talk about current services, to ensure that they are adequately serving local residents, and to consider if there are service gaps, or unintended or unnecessary duplication of services." Mayor Jim Newberry will be speaking. "We also will examine whether there are needs that we have overlooked, or new demands that reflect our changing community, and discuss whether new services are needed. Transportation will be provided to the summit from seven sites: Wood Hill Shopping Center, at the Cinema Parking Lot, Windburn Community Action Center, Gainesway Empowerment Center, Appian Way Apartment Pickup is available, Cardinal Valley Library, Schilltoe Baptist Church, Carver Neighborhood Center, and Blackham Williams Center. Wheels transportation is also provided for those with special needs. Childcare and refreshments will be available at the summit, sign language interpretation and English as a second language interpretation will also be provided. To arrange for wheels, childcare, or sign language interpretation, or for more information, please call the Department of Social Services at 859-258-3800. And I will be there tonight, and I hope that everyone interested in making sure that all the needs of our citizens are met will be out there as well. This is an excellent opportunity to do this. It's the first time, I think, it's ever been done in the history of Lexington, and I think it's a great way to go about things, and it's a new day. And I appreciate the mayor for putting this together, and Commissioner Helms also for working with this."
Thank you very much.
And one other thing.
All right.
Unless you want to make comment about that.
Well, I agree with you, and I really appreciate Commissioner Helms' leadership on this. We have, in the past, spent a lot of money, especially with our partner agencies, and we haven't done it in a very coordinated fashion. This is a step towards trying to be a little more strategic in how we spend that money, and hopefully we'll get a better bang for the buck when it's all said and done with. So, thanks for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, secondly, I'd like to just take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate the person, the life, and the service of the Honorable William E. McEnlty, Jr., of the Kentucky Supreme Court. And Justice McEnlty of the Kentucky Supreme Court has 27 years of judicial experience prior to his appointment and then reelection to the Kentucky Supreme Court. And he served eight years on the Kentucky Court of Appeals, where he wrote approximately 750 opinions. And he was a great asset to our community, our state, and served us well, and I just want to take that time to acknowledge him and celebrate his life. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blevins?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the Neighborhood Development Fund List.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote electronically.
In addition, Mayor, a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank your staff, all the community volunteers, and the folks at Southland Christian for the wonderful service we had for Flight 5191 on Sunday. It was a very moving service for those of you who weren't able to attend. I thought it was just right, and I know all the preparation it took. It was beautiful. Thank you for putting that on. On some lighter notes, in the 10th District, we had an amazing thing occur today. I had the good fortune of attending a press conference with Vice Mayor Gray, where the Good Foods Market and Cafe on Southland Drive has achieved the Energy Star Award from the federal government. This is one of only 14 in the state, and the first here in Fayette County. I'm looking forward to other businesses in our community doing the same thing, and becoming more energy efficient, and taking us down the path towards sustainable living. And Good Foods Market and Cafe has given us a prime example, and leadership example, and I applaud them for today's work and award. The other thing I wanted to bring up was to extend my congratulations to Lexington native and Lafayette grad Tyson Gay, who had a great weekend. Tyson was unbeaten this year going into the World Track and Field Championships in Osaka, Japan, and on Sunday, he became the world champion in the 100 meters. This is one of our native sons. Today, by the way, he put on the best time in all the heats for the 200 meters, so it's looking pretty good there, too. But I wanted to also point out that not only is he a world-class athlete, but he's an outspoken advocate against drug use in track and field, and he's an ideal hero and role model for us as a community. I wanted to give you a heads up, that my office is going to try to coordinate some way of honoring Mr. Gay. Look forward to anybody else that wants to participate in that. Let me know. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a footnote to Councilmember Myers's announcement of the Community Needs Assessment Summit. The Bracktown Church is located just off Leestown Road, beyond Masterson Station Park, and so all who are going there now know the way, and we hope to have a big crowd out tonight for this important event. Secondly, I've gotten some calls from members of the public who are interested in attending next week's, I guess, week from Tuesday, the 9/11 public discussion of the liberalized liquor laws. And they would like to be able to speak, but are worried about not being able to get here before the workday is over. So I'm wondering if it's okay with everybody in the council that we have that discussion following the regular work session, so that most people would have a better opportunity to be here for that discussion. I don't know if that requires a motion or not.
Subject to some input from the Department of Law, I would think if we're going to have a public hearing, some sort of public notice would be appropriate. And so if we wish to have a separate meeting apart from the work session, then we probably would need to publicize the thing in the paper and let people know of it, which is fine. We've got plenty of time to do that. But I'd just point that out, if we're going to have a special meeting, we'll have to publish notice of it.
I wasn't, I don't think I was, you know, arguing for a special meeting. I thought that discussion was going to be just part of the work session. Maybe I was...
Yeah, we can do that, too. Just put it at the end of the work session.
Right, that's exactly my point.
Sure.
Yeah. We don't need a...
If that's what you prefer to do, there's no need to have a special motion or anything else. We'll just put it at the end of the agenda that day, and if things run their ordinary course of business, it'll probably be close to 5:00 anyway.
Good. Thank you. One more thing. The Historic Woodward Heights Neighborhood Association Summer Picnic will be tomorrow night. That's at 6:30 PM at 304 Madison Place, and I look forward to seeing a lot of folks in the neighborhood there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Green, incidentally, Councilmember Blues has agreed to make sure we get that on the bottom of the agenda on the 11th, so shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCord?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things to reiterate about. The last couple of weeks have been really a great time in Lexington for a number of reasons. As Councilmember Blevins mentioned, you know, a native son is the world champion and probably will be in two separate events. He ran a 9-800, which is just amazing. And again, a Lafayette grad, and I would love to work with you on finding the appropriate way to honor him, and some others who may be on that Olympic team. But a couple of things, I was not able to be here last Tuesday because of work, and I wanted to point out that two Fridays ago, we had an incredible day for Lexington. The governor, Chief of Staff Stan Cave, came in to announce the transportation enhancement and the CMAC grants, which are these federal grants that can go towards trails and so forth. And we were able to announce $4.4 million for trails in the city of Lexington. And I do believe that it's a new day that we are starting to see folks realize that this is, that the connectivity of our neighborhoods and our parks is really an important thing. And as everybody up here knows, this is certainly something that I have been, have been working on diligently for two and a half years, and it was just a great day to see kind of a tipping point like that. And the bulk of that money is from Coldstream up to the Horse Park. And so Councilmember Blues was there and was very appreciative, I'm sure, because it's a huge amenity for us. And the goal is to be able to connect all of Lexington and the surrounding counties, but primarily to get you from the Horse Park all the way down to the Kentucky River Adjustment in Garrett Counties. On the heels of that, last Wednesday, the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, approved the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan for the two counties. And why that's a big deal is, is now that is worked into the comprehensive plan and our land use plans, and there is a real formalizing of how we want to build this new infrastructure. So those are really good things. And I know my one was, in the back, just a little while ago, I wanted to point out to him and to Commissioner Kelly that I spoke with the state this week, and there is a portion of the Lafayette Greenway Trail by Waveland Museum Lane that was in the environmental stage and the historic preservation stage that has been completed. And if we can move on that and get that piece done, I know we have the money in place, and now we can put it out to contract, that's another bit of trail we can build before the asphalt plants close in November. So I just wanted to let you know that that had come out. Just a couple of other things. I want to send out, again, on the heels of Tyson Gay's accomplishment, another tremendous accomplishment that was done by some Lexington folks is the South Lexington Cal Ripken 12-year-olds from Schilltoe Park won the World Series in Arkansas this year, just a couple of weeks ago. And we want to, already, I want to make sure that we have them come in and are recognized. And truly, we are starting to see an amazing crop of athletic talent come through our city, and we need to recognize we have a lot of special things here. And lastly, I just want to point out, I'm going to have for council members the draft that Commerce Lexington has put together on how they want to be held accountable for the $620,000 we, as a council, approved to go to economic development. And I just want to make sure that we each have these. Please take a look at it, and let me know what you think, and I would like to bring forth a formal policy so that we can have them come in and show us the progress. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items, but first, I wanted to echo Councilmember Blevins's comments about the 5191 service on Sunday. I know, Mayor, a lot of your folks worked really hard on that. It was very meaningful and very moving, and I just want to thank you and your staff, and everyone at Southland Christian Church who was involved, because it was powerful. And I know it was very difficult for the families, but I think that Lexington really, and you, Mayor, set the tone for that sort of event, which we hope doesn't occur again. As far as the Community Needs Assessment, unfortunately, I can't attend that, but I really look forward to getting the results of that. I think that's going to give us some really good information. I have a question about the road money, which the council put in the budget. There was a deadline, and I want to know if everybody got their lists in, and when that will be coming before the council. Does anyone know the answer to that? We were waiting for some lists. Commissioner Kelly, do you know where we are on the money that's in the budget for road resurfacing and those projects that you were waiting for the lists from council members? Do you know when that will be coming to council?
We don't have all of the...
Do you mind coming to the microphone, please, so we can all hear?
We actually got the last of the information last week, and we're putting together the program now, so we should know pretty soon when we can do it.
So we should expect it maybe this month?
To come to council?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Well, not this month, but next month, September.
I mean, next, that's what I was thinking, September. I'm already in September in my head. Thank you very much. Just one final reminder, because the council does not have a work session on September 4th, reminder for folks that the dog paddle is at Woodland Park on September the 8th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's $10 a dog, and it is a fundraiser to raise money for our dog parks, and it's a great... great fun event if you want to just come and watch. And then, finally, on a very light note, we've had the heavy-duty issue of the Louisville Water Supply Proposal in Planning Committee, and have been discussing that. I don't know if any other elected council members received in their mail an invitation by the University of Louisville to attend their tailgating party when they play the University of Kentucky. I'm a graduate of the University of Kentucky and received this colorful red invitation to attend UofL's tailgating. So they may have a lot of our elected officials just stopped by their tailgating. I don't know if anyone intends to do that, but I thought that was very interesting marketing. Did you say they're talking trash?
No. His invitation's in the trash.
His invitation's in the trash, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to announce once again that this Thursday, August 30th, there's going to be a multi-neighborhood association meeting, and that'll take place at 7:00 PM at Eagle Creek Library. The topic will be the traffic management study. And I've had a couple of questions about whether or not we will be discussing anything else, and I would assume after we have our presentation that we can probably talk about whatever. So please call my office if you want to attend at 258-3214. Thanks.
I have no other council reports listed, so we'll move on to the mayor's report. I have three very quick items. A couple of you have mentioned the memorial service for Flight 5191, and I, too, want to express my appreciation to a number of people who were involved in that, especially to Mary Ann Blodgett on my staff, who worked really hard to make that event come off well. She had the help of a number of different people, including some family members, who gave some input about how best to do that. And the folks at Southland were just absolutely marvelous, and they had a very appropriate place to do it, and they were very generous in every respect. So we're very grateful for their assistance. Second, I want to introduce a new member of the mayor's staff, Anthony Wright. Anthony, if you'd stand up there in the back, please. Anthony is going to be serving as our Director of Economic Development. Anthony comes to us from the League of Cities, and there and elsewhere in his career, he's had an extensive amount of time spent on housing-related issues. And so, I anticipate Anthony's going to be representing the mayor's office on the Housing Authority and focusing on a lot of economic development issues for us. But delighted to have Anthony on board. Today is his second day, so... And last but not least, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the fact that we have today implemented some mandatory restrictions on water usage. I hope you have all received a copy of the declaration that was signed earlier today, as well as a Q and A item from Kentucky American. This is regrettable, but the shortage of rain in southeastern Kentucky has significantly diminished the supply of water in the Kentucky River. And as a consequence of that, Kentucky American and I both feel as though it is appropriate for us to implement this, what's known as a water shortage partial alert. There is, in our ordinances, a phased-in series of steps that we take whenever there's a water shortage problem. This is the third phase. To the degree people are adversely impacted by it and feel as though they need to have some variance or change to reflect their particular situation, you should know that there is a Water Conservation Appeals Board that will be meeting periodically to address those concerns. And so, if people have, your constituents have questions about how that should be implemented, then feel free to contact our office. And if they wish to make an appeal, they need to do so in writing to Joe Kelly's attention and care of the mayor's office. I'm sure we'll hear a lot more about this as the days roll on, and we don't have any rain, but if we are fortunate enough to have some rain, we'll try to put an end to this as quickly as we can. Unless there are questions on any of those issues, we'll move on. I have one person who has indicated a willingness, an interest in speaking on a matter not on the agenda, and that's Mr. Cooper, who I inadvertently recognized earlier. I appreciate your patience. Thank you very much. You'll have three minutes, Mr. Cooper. If you could give us your address, please.
That's Dave Cooper, 608 Allen Court. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I spoke to you all a couple of months ago about some concerns I had about some litter problems in the North Elizabeth Street neighborhood. I made the statement then that I felt that the programs that we had in place, what we're doing now, is not working as far as helping clean up this neighborhood. I did get to speak to Mr. Bennett for quite a while after my talk last time. He informed me about some of the programs that we do have in place, and some of the things that the city and code enforcement is trying to do to help with this situation. We've got a football game Saturday night, so what I'd like to propose is that on Sunday, we take a little walking tour of the North Elizabeth Street neighborhood. Maybe we can brainstorm some ideas and look at some of the problems in this neighborhood. I know that UK has started putting out recycling containers in the tailgate area. I think that's a great idea. I think that's something that could probably be done in the neighborhoods as well. There's other good ideas like that, that I think we can help get a handle on some of the party problems that go on in the neighborhood during and before the football games and afterwards. So I'd like to invite all the council members to take a walking tour of the Elizabeth Street neighborhood. It'll be one hour. It won't be long. I might even bring my dog, so it'll be real low-key. So I have some little flyers here I'd like to pass out to the council members. And I'd like to invite the Code Enforcement, Division of Police. Is this town gown, does that still exist? Okay. I'd like to invite the members of the Town Gown Committee. I don't know how to do that. Can somebody take care of that for me? Thank you.
Taken care of.
Thank you. And I'll get some flyers over to UK, too, and maybe we can have a little walk around the neighborhood. There's, I'd like to report back, too, on some ideas that we've come up with. And I understand there's not a work session on next Tuesday, so could I possibly get on the agenda sometime to give a five or 10-minute report back?
Certainly. And if you would check with Mr. Green back there, he'll coordinate schedules with you, and we'll work that out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to speak on matters not on the agenda? Councilmember Blevins, then.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved pursuant to KRS 61.810, Section 1, Subsection C, to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing proposed and pending litigation matters involving the Lexington Fayette, Ermen County Government.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote electronically. Councilmembers?
Please vote.
Please vote.
Vote.
Yes. All right. Motion carries. We'll go into closed session as soon as possible here.